Okay, we are going to begin this meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Flag is right outside here. You all stand and join me in the salute to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
At this moment, we will open up the public forum session at the meeting, which is Monday, July 11th. This is a special meeting, along with the school committee meeting, where we're in room 26. Finance meeting was at 6:00. It's now 6:30. Would anyone like to address the committee? Once again, on last time. Now to close this portion of the meeting, are there any communications?
There are no communications.
And in the report?
No superintendent's report to see you.
Okay. Presentations, committee discussion. Move on to, I believe, the yet-to-date budget to actual finances.
Kristen will be right back. She has to take care of her windows in the car.
Okay. We will move through 2C, how's that? Which is the school department transportation contract.
Okay. The transportation contract and the executive notes. This is, the procurement has been primarily handled by the city procurement office. We ultimately sent the bid form out to the general public. We received one bid in response to the school transportation bid. It was received from First Student, who is our current school transportation contractor. And I did include the detail of the bid submission form in the school committee package that Chris Silverman had sent out. It is for a five-year contract. And the five-year contract was approved by city council so that we could go out for the full five years. The total bid is $13,114,764. And what I did was, I broke down the annual costs and the annual increases based upon year two, which would be FY '18, there is an 8% increase. But in the bid document, we had also requested that buses can go as far as 10 years of age. So this percentage increase is primarily because First Student is going to have to invest in some capital expenses to replace some of the buses. The subsequent years, years three, four, and five, are about a 3.5% increase. And that's typical for the industry, and also typical to the fact that we didn't include a geol escalation clause in the contract. So I believe that this is in line. I was a little bit disappointed that we only received one bid, but I think that was primarily due to the timing of the bid document and the time that it hit the market and was advertised. So that's where we stand. And since it is our only bid and we do need to move forward with a transportation contract, I'd recommend that we approve the contract and we can move forward with the contract agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the transportation contract.
I'll second it.
Questions or comments?
Discussion. Jim, do you have a total value for year one on the contract?
I believe this is the number here, the 2362095. Oh, you didn't receive that package, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't.
I had sent this out separately, but you were having trouble with the email. 2362095.
So that's substantially less.
Well, the thing is, you just have to remember that this is only regular pupil transportation. In addition to this, we also have in-district special education pupil transportation, as well as out-of-district pupil transportation. So that's the number that aggregates up to around the $4.2 million figure that we typically have. So I can get those other components. I just didn't have them into my fingertips over the weekend when I was putting this together, because those were negotiated separately.
Did you talk about this during the finance meeting? And so do we have sufficient funds to pay for the decrease?
This amount has already been encumbered in FY '17. And based upon the amount that we were receiving for Medicaid, we should have sufficient funding.
Can I ask?
You may.
So where are we to encumber? Because I don't think we encumbered the whole thing this year. We rolled our expenses. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, I think primarily Alicia had contacted me and she had fully encumbered it in just the transportation in the general fund and then the anticipated funding from Medicaid. So this amount is covered in 2362, but I have to check on the special education amounts.
So how can we encumber that though? Almost since school choice, within, it's just what the city gives us? Like, so we give us a 3.4%.
Right. And that's what she encumbered against.
Okay, so I'll get that.
Yeah. Right.
So I think we might have a copy, I think maybe you'll give us.
Yeah, we'll break it down.
The spreadsheets. Because we don't have enough to cover possibly this year. So I'm just trying to figure out how we do it for next year, unless you did take something else.
But in preparation for moving forward with this contract, I wanted to make sure that the funds were encumbered. So we went ahead and encumbered.
But with the net school spending budgets, I'm trying to figure where you're covering.
No, what I'm saying is this 2362 was encumbered against the amount that the mayor already had in his budget. It was approved by city council. And then we have to aggregate it up, which I'll give you the pieces of the special education in district and out of district. And then we'll figure out what the next step's after there.
The one thing that Sean did today, or actually Sean and someone else, that we could maybe fight against and let him do circuit breaker for the spent transportation.
There could be potential in that, but I haven't been involved directly in any of that conversation with Masco or anything.
I don't know if they felt like other districts did it. I don't know. I'm hoping, if we need a replacement anyways, that's kind of a moot point. All right, yeah, so I'll give you a copy of the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Just because if we're going to make a decision about anything, we need to do it way before school starts.
Yep, okay.
Remember the subject to appropriation contract?
Yep.
Is the amount $2 million?
2362095.
So the rest of the subject to appropriation process.
What does that mean?
So pretend we're talking about having funds coming from the university. But that's subject to appropriation.
Oh.
Right, I agree, yes.
So if you're voting on this, you're voting on it subject to the funding coming back and the subject and the funding getting appropriated.
Yes.
So I'll bring my notes in. Say subject to, or you want to?
Are we voting just on the, we don't have to keep this service level the same if we can't afford it, can we?
No, we have the ability within the bid specifications to be able to make adjustments during the course of the year.
Do you want to add that?
You've got to ask them. I mean, we can't. I think we can do it any other way. The funding's not there right now. Okay. Any other questions? Not all in favor, so it's a financial matter. Those opposed? Thank you. We'll move back to the yet-to-date budget to actual finances.
So our budget update is really another warrant before post so that we can see stuff in 55 as well. We're here hoping to be able to cover all of our expenses. Do you think we can do stuff?
Do we get more than decent?
Yeah, I'll make sure. Our finance is received.
And then what we're going to do is give the six-week actuals. And then rebuild our 17 budget with 16 actuals. And make some transfers to start, you know, say our real budget for vacation, you know, September 1st, which is us looking at numbers as opposed to an approved budget or not approved budget or whatever.
Just one thing, we should get a copy of the revolving account balance. I know that goes hand in hand, but we have no idea how much we have in revolving.
Okay.
But we got one last, and that's why I was a little concerned. How many said we had $700,000? Because we ended with $1,001,000 the last week. So that's a huge distraction.
At your last finance meeting?
Yes.
Oh, really? Okay, I didn't know that, so, okay.
And I don't think Shane and I get all that stuff. So maybe things paid, you know, hadn't been covered up. I don't know.
We're just in that period of flux where we need to reconcile with the city's numbers. And she was working on that over the weekend. And we'll, by the time we have the next finance meeting, we'll be as close as we can to be able to give you those balances, so.
And then I think one thing the finance wants to talk about that I would really like to do is move the insurance back into the general budget. Let's pick something else to move out. I mean, we're going to spend the money anyway, but I just, I just don't think.
So move insurance out of school choice?
Yeah. And whether it's copiers or, I don't know, we can talk about it.
Yeah, okay.
One-time expenses.
All right.
I know it's easy because insurance is one big thing. And I get that.
Yeah, but you guys have never come to a move, so.
Okay, so we're going to table this. We'll now move back to 2B.
Well, I think we can do warrants too.
Okay, you got warrants?
Yeah, but that's down, that's down to three.
Okay. We'll move on to the proposal for a financial audit.
Chris, can you take that? So I mentioned against Ellen, Sean's boss, the warrant. He was concerned about us getting a year audit because the city will give us certain lines if he gives us their audit. He doesn't know the time and the money and the fact that we don't have personnel in our office to provide the information to the auditors. At this point is really what we're looking for, as opposed to, he's in a financial statement audit, giving us very, I don't know, two, seven, or 12 months.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. So I think I need to talk to Dan and get his input. So, is he, he suggested that's why I talked to him. It's more a procedures thing. You know, open lines and he can pick up any, you know, huge things. Where if they're not, need words done okay, along those lines. But I'm not sure that's a good one.
Can we at least get an update on the 2014 audit? We have a number of findings there. One came in special ed and other findings. And I haven't seen anything updated on one of those issues.
Right. Instead of one thing that we touched on very briefly, if we keep getting these audits and we don't do much with them, do we really need to?
You never got the final results of that?
No, I said, I said I'd ask.
But I thought that Dan was going to throw it to you, so, okay.
So Jim, you can provide the report? You know, I'd say the only thing honestly is we don't have anyone sitting in that office who can talk about that. So Jim?
I know, but at least the mayor has requested. Is there an answer to it? I thought it was already taken care of.
You know, hopefully you can.
Okay.
So I'll get back to you after I've talked to you.
Move now on to subcommittee reports. Anything on the policy, really?
Nothing.
Finance subcommittee? Approval of warrants?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following warrants. Warrant 49 for $242,567.50. Warrant 50, $1,965,707.80. Warrant 51 for $186,91.1. Warrant 52, $8,906,160.4. Warrant 53, $370,473.3. And going to the grants and revolving funds, warrant 49 for $110,731.92. Warrant 50 for $186,34.4. Warrant 51 for $451.971.43. Warrant 52 for $1,541,678.78. And warrant 53 for $225,217.33.
I'll second.
Motion approved in the second on warrants 49 through 53. Are there any questions about any of you? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? We have approval of the warrants. So we'll now move on to vote on the confirmed unit B contract.
Okay. This is the detail that we had discussed earlier. This has been fully audited and reviewed by our encumbrances within payroll. So the aggregate, once we went through everything and we prepared the payroll ties into that financial cover sheet that I had given you a few minutes ago, the 74, 446. And that's the 73, 945, 93, which is on the detailed sheet, the third page of this detailed sheet. Plus, there was a stipend of $500 that had been missed in the last payroll that we encumbered in FY '16 to be paid also. So that brings it up to the 74, 446. So that's the final number that I provided you incorrect information on during the last meeting. And I'm just recommending that we, it's up to the committee, but we can confirm that vote so that we can move on with the retro base for the unit B contract.
Okay. Is the motion approved?
Make motion approved.
I'll send it.
Send it. Bishma?
So the amounts are due, I'm sorry, I just said this, are the raise plus whatever?
1% for the first year of the contract.
And will there be changes to?
All of that is all incorporated. Yeah, essentially what we did was we re-engineered the entire contract to, and this is what we had talked about before, to reduce it either 210 or 215 working days for each member depending upon their position within unit B. All the salary tables have been reworked and everything is incorporated into the new salary tables. We just need now this two-year contract to be able to get everybody up to speed accordingly, so.
Let's say there's a lot of $5,000.
That was primarily because they were working a far number of less days. So in a lot of cases, people are working more days than what they were originally working in the older contract. So this is an initial calculation to be able to bring people up to either the 210 or the 250.
So these numbers are the ones that will share?
Yeah.
And are they in there?
Everything's in there, yes, yeah.
They're in the budget for the 17, Jim? So for 16, it's costing us $74,000? And that was in the budget?
Yes, and that's encumbered now because I couldn't pay them without approval of the committee. So I have them encumbered, ready to pay.
Except that we're short, just to note, we're short $180,000 in salary. So these could be encumbered, somebody else might not. You know, our numbers are going to change for 17.
So we say we don't get the money? I mean, we checked them, but all people get this for $180,000 short in salary. So that's initially, right?
So these are encumbered in that to say we're short $100,000 left if there wasn't.
But we're thinking, but we're thinking that the two warrants that haven't been posted are going to cover this, right?
Yeah, but we also have transfers that we will take care of to cover the shortage in salaries, so.
But I was going to say, so we may have to encumber even in 17, but we're so short, you know, we're still going to have to adjust. So in a sense, they're almost not encumbered.
Well, I had to encumber them for 16 because we just processed our last payroll.
The final. So they are encumbered. What's your, what do you have of the salary number? The net school spending salary on rates for 17?
I do not have that.
So my guess is, we're still going to be short, is all I'm saying, in the salary for 16. We can talk about it being encumbered, but it's something short.
We will be short in the second portion of bringing the unit B up to speed. The 2% that has been negotiated for all the unions have been calculated in FY '17. So it's just the amount that would be needed to finish up the last increment to get them up to the new negotiated salary matrix. And that amount would be the other half, which would be, I'll tell you here in a minute, which would be 67, 336, 90, so.
Then you think the extra base that we're working with is something that you need?
Yeah, I think it's going to be beneficial to have those people come in, and especially the assistant principals, who typically leave at the end of the school year and don't come back until beginning of August, so.
Motion?
Yeah. So Jim, for 2016, the impact is $74,000. For 2017?
Yes.
It's going to be a lot more because there's.
Yes, because it is.
So what's that number?
It includes the.
$18,000 or something?
The 2% increase, which is what we negotiated with the unions. The other percentage to bring them up in the second half of the contract is 67, 337. And then the 2% piece is 45, 673. So it comes to about 113, 110. I mean, 113, 010. And as Kristen had said, the piece that technically isn't budgeted in FY '17 is the 67, 337. That 2% would be already factored in.
So I think so. So by approving this tonight, $74,000 retro, we're also approving?
The FY '17 piece.
$113,000. And that includes the individual ones that were getting significant bumps?
Yes. That, it's, it's, it's actually, they're increments over two years because we reduced that contract to a two-year contract.
So some of these are $5,400, $5,000. Some are as low as only $2,000.
Yep.
Some are opposed to $6,000.
So the $5,000 for ones who work.
Those little ones that had to work additional days to get up to 210.
They do seem like a, the most likely place for assistance.
Exactly.
Okay, is the motion a second? Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, signify in the financial manner? Those opposed?
Okay. Thank you, we can move forward, I appreciate it.
As long as we have enough money, and that's the pieces of the things we need to talk about. Prior to, as we're voting on these and in negotiations, I think these are the things we need to talk about so we know what we're, so we're not getting any surprises. But at least this makes this part of the year whole, right?
Yes, everybody. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well now move on to. So now we can vote on the unit B contract. Or is that pretty much all set now, right? So we'll vote on transportation. All right, we'll vote on transportation now, the transportation contract, which we already did. And we amended it by subject to appropriation. Is there any new or old business?
Yes.
Okay, and two things. I want to bring up, it's not my topic, but I kind of took charge of it. Knowing I had made void of the last finance subcommittee meeting that certain school committee members didn't get appropriate compensation. And for the record, the city council is addressing that. So I just want that for the record. The second item is, I spoke with Nancy Walzer. And Jim, I understand you spoke to her as well?
Yeah, only to make sure that she knew that either you or the mayor were going to contact her because we hadn't been in touch with her for a while.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to break the ice, let her know that one of you would be in contact, so.
Right. So, you know, we talked about changing the committee. And so what she offered to do is to come in and we could all review protocols by the school committee, which was a good thing. And also develop goals. She will help us with that. So what I'm hoping is I can get back to her tomorrow with a date. And we were talking about like the beginning of August. So I was looking at maybe August 6th on a Saturday.
So I will be away in May, May weekend?
Yeah, I'm away on the 6th and the 13th, those Saturdays. But after that, I'd be available, so.
So this is going to work. I'm sorry.
Can we also, I'm, I'm sorry. Can we also ask for the Robert's rules in the DEDs to be seen? About, I'm sorry, Robert's rules. I mean, if that's what we follow, it seems that someone should be up on really how Robert's rules work.
Do you have the book? Yes, you can have the book.
I got the book right here, but it's not, it's not, it's not the, it's this one. But they have one that's Rules of Water.
And there's like a sheet.
There is. Then we can actually kind of run over basic stuff, you know, like motions.
Well, I think that's a different role that she plays. I mean, she's more doing the group dynamics for us. I mean, you know, educating you on Robert's rules would probably be a different group, or even in MSA. I mean.
Yeah, we could look into that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we want to be productive with her. And, you know, we have a history with her where she came in, developed our protocols. So she's willing to come in and, you know, knowing that the committee has changed. You know, maybe protocols will change based on current new members and whatever, so. But I think also she's going to give us homework to do. She's going to send everybody some questions. And, you know, Jim, we talked about like your review and how, you know, we set the review up where, you know, the starting point for your goals is going to be your areas of improvement in your review. And I think that's a, I think that was our goal, is to get your goals by September.
Yep.
We should. So I guess now trying to nail down a Saturday in August. And it sounds like that's going to be difficult.
What about the 20th? Or the 7th?
I'm okay on those dates.
Same here. I probably could do the 20th, but unfortunately I'm going on vacation, so. I don't, I, you know, I could ask her, she can come early. Is that good for everybody else?
20th, 20th. Do you want Saturdays to get more hours in?
Yeah, she can't do it. I mean, it's not going to fit into a night.
No, she said that.
I mean, I think we're looking at six hours at least.
So what date do you say?
Well, it looks like the 20th right now.
So you're looking for six hours on the Saturday, like at 8:00, 2:00, 3:00?
I'd like to do it early. I mean, is that agreeable with everybody?
Sure.
And is that the only date?
I just don't know if at a certain point it will become ready to we still function and hours before, you know.
Well, I think there's going to be prep work before then. I don't think we're going to. And I think, right, I think part of the prep work before is hopefully going to, you know, like for goals. We should all come to the table with ideas.
But that's a, I agree.
Yeah. And then the protocols. You know, everybody should review the protocols of the committee and, you know, think about, you know, what we can change, what we like, what doesn't work, whatever. I think that will work. So, okay, so no one else has any flexibility on their date, either 6th or the 13th?
I could do.
I could do either.
I could do either of those.
Right, but you said you were on the 6th.
Right, and definitely on the 6th. I was supposed to be going away the following weekend as well.
Yeah, both, I'll be away both 6th and 13th.
Okay, so we say 20th. Try to do the 20th.
20th, that's what we put in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, so we have to. If you're in September, I think.
Well, it's a bit September, just in case, you know.
What's the first meeting we have coming back? There shouldn't be much of that.
The 6th. But we did talk about having a meeting in August.
No, we should have one scheduled.
We have one. I don't have the calendar.
Is it the 29th? I don't.
I have one on the 20th then.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't load them up yet, so.
At this point, I'm going for surgery, so I don't have any time. So probably the earliest in September would be, I gave us.
So I had 10.
The 10th would be because the 3rd is the labor day weekend.
And I have to wait in the 10th. So I'm just not exactly sure on the time they had for time this, but.
Yeah, I would be more inclined to do it in August. I like to give up my time to get it done.
She can do it, not I guess.
Yes.
So how many can do it on the 20th? So everybody can do it on the 20th?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have to move some stuff around, so.
One, two.
Well, I, I mean, it's my vacation, but whatever. I, you know. No, I mean, I'm not leaving until later in the day, so I will.
So does 8:00 to 2:00 work for you, or do you?
I'll talk to me.
20th to 20th.
The twentieth to the twenty-first, twenty, twentieth, it's a Saturday. The twenty-first is dropping broke rate, so I'm good with the twentieth.
Whatever the permission you do.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, we have to move it off.
All right, check to the her, see if she can do it.
Yeah, okay. All right, so let her get the ball rolling.
Yeah, yeah. So, you wanna get back to Kristen, and then we can get an email, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're just trying to get Nancy, right?
Yeah.
You're in.
Yeah. Yeah, she knew we were meeting tonight, and, you know, I set up, let me try to lock a date. She'd already cleared the dates in August, but she was available, so.
Okay, any other new oral business? Motion adjourned? Second? All in favor? Okay, but if somebody scheduled changes between round and...
No.
Because we really like to make sure everybody can... We have to push it over.
You're standing in the street?
No, I gotta take here, I, no, I gotta take here the run of the finish line.
Um, Kevin, what...
I gotta take here the run of the...